Live. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Welcome to the meeting. So, Libby's somewhere.
She will be watching the YouTube video.
Okay, uh, next thing on the agenda of approval of the minutes for August eleventh.
I thought they moved time.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes.
Yeah, I'll second.
So there's a motion by Chris, second by Kent to approve the minutes of August eleventh, all those in favor. Thank you. I abstain. With a, okay, uh, Jeff abstaining. Uh, next is, uh, department reports. And. Can't see who's there.
Chief is here. I think I saw Dan too. I think both chiefs are on.
Is that Dan?
Yes.
Okay. Hi, Dan. Uh, Chief Roy.
Hey, good evening.
Good evening. Hi.
Well, I'm getting a neck. Oh, there we go. So the fire department's been fairly busy the past few weeks responding to several vehicle crashes. We're currently about eighty plus calls this year, which is actually down about twenty-five calls from last year at this time. So it's been relatively quiet spell this year, but knock on wood. Most significant incident, as many of you know, we, we had a fatal injury to a pedestrian that was struck by a vehicle. Few of our members actually attended his funeral last, last Friday. Kyle was, for, for those of you that don't know, he was actually a member of the Monmouth Fire Department back in two thousand nine. Did a short stint with us for about a year. And of course, his father, stepfather and brother were members of the fire department as well, so it hit pretty close to home. So just want to say rest in peace, Kyle. Tomorrow evening, about twenty-eight members of the fire department are going to be attending a CPR training at our center fire station. And one of our former members, Mike Mullen, will be, uh, our instructor for that evening. And haven't told you yet, uh, but we've been doing some troubleshooting of our boiler at the center station. Turns out, um, we need about a thousand dollar repair. I'm gonna say about twelve hundred dollars at the most. Uh, I've got the money in the budget to do this repair. Uh, the alternative is to replace the boiler, uh, which would be a cost of about eighty-five hundred to nine thousand dollars. So I'm opting to do the twelve hundred dollar repair and hopefully buy us another five years, uh, with the current boiler. Uh, this is a gas-fired wall-mounted boiler and we have to replace the manifold. Unfortunately, there's a lot of rust in and acidic damage, uh, from, from the boiler. So, um, I've set that motion, uh, in process with, uh, I guess the fuel company to make that repair. And again, hopefully we can buy several more years out of that boiler. Uh, another issue we have is with our north station. Uh, we just got a minor water leak around the chimney, so I've contracted with a chimney mason, about a two hundred and fifty dollar repair, uh, put a chimney cap and do some, uh, sealing of the flashing around the chimney. So again, hopefully, uh, that small repair will buy us many more years with that chimney. But we've been having a few water leaks with all the rain we've been getting. So just showing the age of our, our two stations, unfortunately. Last thing I got is we're finalizing the plans for a nine eleven ceremony. Uh, I gotta get together with Chief Moehren and talk about this because I'd like to shut down the road during this ceremony, uh, to make it safer for people to, uh, attend this event and, and observe from the roadside. Uh, I'd be at the front of the fire station. And of course, that'd be on Saturday, September eleventh. Uh, this is the twentieth anniversary of nine eleven. I think I mentioned in a previous meeting that we were looking to do this. Um, but the committee got together this past week and we're finalizing those plans. And it looks like it's gonna be from like nine forty-five to about ten thirty, so about a forty-five minute, uh, timeframe for this event. And what we're gonna do is recognize the twentieth anniversary, but also we're gonna bring down the piece of steel from nine eleven that we obtained last year. Uh, we're gonna put that on the back of engine two and, um, we're gonna have a few more things to, to, to go over, you know, regarding the anniversary, but also the unveiling of our memorial that we're gonna construct, uh, over the course of the next year. Uh, we're still in the fundraising process and I'm gonna be writing a grant for that. Um, so we're hoping to start construction on that memorial sometime next summer. And by two thousand, September of two thousand twenty-two, uh, we'll have a more formal dedication of that memorial. But we thought it would be good on the twentieth anniversary to have the unveiling of what that concept is gonna look like, so that'll be part of this ceremony. But the thing I need to do to get together with Chief Moehren is, um, and perhaps I need DOT approval, is to shut down Main Street and detour traffic during this event. But I'll get together with Kevin and we'll, we'll discuss those logistics. But I just wanted to give you a heads up on that and we'll be advertising, uh, this event probably in the next couple of days, because, you know, it's less than two weeks away. So that's all I got for the fire department. Any questions?
How old is that, uh, gas furnace, Dan?
I'm gonna say it's over twelve years old. And I'm told that wall-mounted, uh, gas boilers don't last as long as, you know, your old-fashioned cast iron, uh, boilers do.
All right, thanks.
Yep.
Uh, Dan?
Yes.
What, what, uh, you said you, the training that was gonna go on, uh, is at the center station?
Yes, yeah, CPR training at the center station, um, tomorrow evening. And that's, uh, with Mike Mullen, uh, one of our former fire employees. He's actually a full-time firefighter now down in Wyndham Fire Department. This was something that we had to sign up for because to get these CPR cards, they've actually gone up in price. They're now thirty dollars a piece. Last year, uh, two years ago, rather, they were twenty dollars a piece. And then two years prior to that, I think they were like three dollars a piece. So, uh, for some reason, the cost of paper, it's going up. I don't, um. But Mike's, uh, been very generous. Uh, he rents the equipment for us, um, and gives his time to, to put on the class for us. So the cost is only for the cards, the CPR cards.
Thank you.
Yep.
I'll say, uh, uh, Chief Moehren.
Hi, good evening. Can you hear me? Just maybe. Okay, uh, so I'd like to thank Fire Department for the past couple of accidents that we've had, uh, doing the traffic. Uh, that's a tremendous help to us. Officer Bachman's in his second week. Started today, so. So far, so good. And the only other thing that I really have is, uh, the July monthly report. Uh, you should have gotten that, that. Timeframe for July, we had a hundred and seventy-five calls to service. With officers also conducted a hundred and nineteen motor vehicle stops with three criminal summonses, um, operating our suspension, O U I, and criminal speed. Uh, many questions on that? That's all I have.
Thanks for putting that year-over-year there for us.
Yes, thank you.
No problem.
That's helpful. Thank you.
The only thing I have is just an update on the administration building. If all goes well, we should be in there for the next select board meeting on September eighth. The carpeting was all done today. It looks great. Uh, we have the television set, uh, large seventy-inch screen. And the way we're going to set it up up there is going to be much more audience-friendly than this setup is. Uh, we won't have the audience sitting behind the television anymore. Select board will be up here. Large screen will be up to your, uh, left on the wall and then everyone will be able to see it. And, um, we'll be setting that all up hopefully within the next few weeks. And assuming that you pass the heat pump award a bid tonight, we'll have the heat pumps going in within the next few weeks as well.
Great. Thank you.
Uh, next thing on the agenda are, uh, select board reports.
Now I have one. There was some misinformation put out a couple of weeks ago about net metering. Net metering was initially, uh, passed by the legislature in nineteen eighty-seven primarily for hydro power. And, uh, solar power was exempted from the requirements, uh, most recently. And it, and it's had an on-again, off-again relationship. Uh, sometimes it's been repealed, sometimes it's been rolled back, sometimes it's been brought forward. Uh, in two thousand sixteen, it was largely, uh, uh, repealed from, uh, PUC rulemaking. And in two thousand nineteen, it was reinstated by an act of the legislature. So my question about what happens if net metering goes away, I think is still appropriate.
Uh, we are in the process of, I've got an RFP out for solar. And there are three companies that have responded so far with questions and then looking at sites around, uh, the town. We think we may have found a, a place and that would be up in the back of the salt and sand pile up at Public Works. They need three-phase electricity and there's only a couple of places in town that we have property where they can do that. But certainly, uh, when I bring that back to you, uh, if you want to award the bid to do an array, those are questions that we can ask the company for sure.
How big would the project be?
I, I was told that we needed, uh, thirty-three thousand square feet in order to take care of the town's, all of our electrical needs. But how many panels did I put in time?
I can figure it out. The other interesting thing is that just this May, the, uh, legislature did pass another change to net metering, rolling it back and significantly changing the rules for two to five megawatt projects, uh, which actually, uh, was designed to have an effect on dampening those projects because the state electrical grid can't handle the influx.
The companies that we're talking to are, are right on top of those new lies, so we'll be in good hands when they come forward.
And yet, being a member of the legislature in two thousand sixteen when that metering, uh, was tweaked, I know that legislation quite well. It's also important to understand that when net metering was paused in two thousand sixteen, I think it was the twenty seventeen, was when that law took effect. Uh, all existing, uh, uh, facilities that were enjoying the, the benefits of net metering were grandfathered. So, uh, that everybody who was participating in that program at that time could recoup their investment.
Well, that is true.
And so your concerns about what if net metering goes away, uh, would be only if we don't take advantage of the opportunity that's in front of us. And then for some reason, it goes away and we haven't gone through the process of saving monomer taxpayers' money.
Well, I will also point out that, uh, Hawaii got rid of it altogether, even to grandfather people. And Sweden and a number of other countries went from net metering to hourly metering because it was costing them too much money. So things can happen, changes can happen. Nothing's ever written in stone.
Well, I would say that if the legislature were to pass legislation here in Maine, here in America, if they were to make it, uh, turn it into an economic loss for anyone who's participating in net metering, those parties would have a reason to actually call that a taking. And if it's a taking, then they have legal recourse to regain their investment. I mean, that's.
It will cost the taxpayers money to pay for their, them to regain their investment.
This will be on the agenda in a few weeks for discussion. Thank you.
Okay, any other slide board? Uh, next is public comment. So anybody who'd like to comment? Okay. Then on to, uh, accepting a dividend from the Maine Municipal Association.
We are in receipt of a check for seven thousand sixty-six dollars of the annual dividend from the workers' compensation fund and the property and casualty pool from MMA. Uh, this is just before you're deceiving to formally accept the funds.
I make a motion that we accept the funds.
I just have a question first. Is this a typical amount of money since it's the first time I've seen this come through?
Roughly the same amount every year.
Okay.
Give or take.
And we still, you know, and I know we've made a lot of changes to some of our, you know, things at the transfer stations and, and safety stuff.
We stay in compliance with MMA and we get a dividend.
Okay.
We're not the only municipality getting a dividend, but at the end of the year, uh, their fiscal year, the way it works, um, they have a prop, uh, uh, yeah, process where they distribute dividends to municipalities and this is our share.
And I would point out the dividend goes back to the undesigned fund balance.
Now, I'll second Ken's motion.
So Kent made a motion and, uh, Chris seconded it to, uh, accept the dividend from the Maine Municipal Association, seven thousand sixty-six dollars. All those in favor? Thank you. Uh, next is to accept a bequest from the estate of Freeman Lloyd McCabe. He, uh, gave money to the, uh, Compton Library and to Compton Hall.
We were notified, uh, well, actually Julie and Dennis were notified a little over a year ago that they were in Mr. McCabe's will. Uh, but we didn't know how much we would be receiving until a few weeks ago when I was contacted by, uh, Iona McCabe. And she wanted to bring down the funds, so the library and Compton Hall are each getting twenty-five thousand one hundred seventy-seven dollars, twenty-seven cents in unrestricted bequest from, um, Freeman McCabe. I know that Dennis is planning on putting his toward, uh, the lighting project in the theater. And I think Julie is just going to let her sit, uh, for a while until the needs arise that she can use that money. It will be important to remember next year when funds are being rolled over, uh, to include the funds for the library that may be left, uh, unused. I, I doubt that Dennis will have any left because that lighting project is going to be more than what we've received so far.
Good.
I'll make a motion to accept the bequest for the library and for Compton Hall from Freeman Lloyd McCabe.
Second. So there's a motion by Chris, second by Kent to accept the bequest from, uh, Lloyd McCabe, Lloyd McCabe's estate. Uh, all those in favor? Thank you. Uh, next is to appoint members to the Kennebec Valley Council of Government's General Assembly.
This is an annual item that comes before the select board. Uh, last year, you had, um, appointed Harold Jones and Mike Menkowsky, former, uh, select board member. Um, they're looking for two members to be appointed to the general assembly. I think you meet twice a year, maybe once a year. But as members of KV Cog, uh, we have representation on that general assembly, so they're looking for two members.
Kent, let's bring up your.
Where do they meet?
Uh, that I don't think I know, whether they move.
KV Cog office.
That's what I was thinking, yeah.
Wilton. Or north of, uh, in Farmingdale, uh, Farmington?
Fairfield.
Fairfield.
Fairfield, yeah. Seventeen Main Street. Fairfield, yeah, it's their main, their track.
I'm guessing that's where they have their meetings, unless they move them around or who knows that they end up going Zoom again. I don't know.
Harold's.
They never moved it around when I was on it. They never moved it around when I was on it.
You, somebody wanna volunteer?
I'm gonna volunteer, Kent. Kent and Harold will have to.
Okay.
I did talk to Harold today. He didn't do any volunteering for anything, but.
Tim, is that something you'd want to do?
No.
Yeah.
I've done it enough. I went up enough. I was both on the general council and the council of, uh, governance or whatever. I, I used, I used to go to meetings monthly up there.
So is Kent saying yes?
Okay.
And do we tentatively want to, uh, put Harold back on again and I can reach out to him tomorrow to see if he's up there with us?
We need someone to.
Yes. So we have to do, do a little.
Motion, yes.
I'll make a motion to, um, nominate Kent and Harold for the, um, members to the Kennebec Valley Council of Governments General Assembly.
And, wait, second.
Sure, I'll second.
Uh, so this is a, uh, a motion by Chris, second by Kent to, uh, appoint, uh, Harold and, uh, Kent to the KV Cog General Assembly. All those in favor?
I abstain.
Uh, next to is, is to accept a donation from, uh, Friends of Compton Hall for the lighting project in Compton Hall.
Dennis has received a check from, uh, Friends of Comston Hall to put toward, these are restricted funds to be put toward the lighting project in the theater. This formally accepts a twenty thousand dollar donation to the town.
I make a motion, we accept the donation to the Friends of Comston Hall for the lighting.
I'll second.
So the motion by Kent, second by Chris to, uh, accept, accept the donation from, uh, Friends of Comston Hall for the lighting project. All those in favor?
I'll abstain because I'm not sure that the voters actually authorize the work to be done.
Do the voters have to authorize?
No.
No.
No, they had to authorize the capital improvement fund for the money that, uh, we were appropriating and they did.
And the project is gonna cost how much?
Ninety-nine, ninety-nine.
How much was the capital improvement fund that was authorized?
It was forty-nine thousand, I believe, but thirty-three thousand of that was toward lights.
So they didn't actually authorize the expenditure of ninety-nine thousand dollars?
They expended and they authorized an expenditure of thirty-three thousand dollars toward the capital improvement program for Comston Hall. The rest is just being raised in donations.
But the voters didn't authorize the expenditure of ninety-nine thousand dollars?
No, but the voters did pass a separate article that allows the, uh, town to use all donations, grants and any funds received for the specific projects that they've been donated for, so you do have authority to accept that money on behalf of that party.
And the hall trustees approve the program.
Yes.
Approve the project, so.
Yeah. Uh, next is to set the mill rate.
Your assessor's agent has, uh, supplied you with the tax rate calculation form in the packet. Uh, you will see, uh, the one thing that we, um, can fluctuate, but we've tried to keep it as close to last year's amount as possible is the overlay. And that overlay is kind of like an insurance policy for the people who don't pay their taxes. Uh, last year, I think it was sixty-something thousand. This year, we're recommending fifty-six thousand. You go higher than that, it's going to increase the tax rate more than we're recommending. Uh, we are recommending a sixty-five cent increase, which is much better than where we thought we were going to be before the fifty-five percent, uh, aid to education, uh, allotment was brought up to where it should be. Um, I will say that I believe that most of that sixty-five cents, probably around fifty cents, Tim's better with this number than I am, is probably for the RSU and the remaining fifteen percent is for the municipal side. So this would formally set the, uh, tax rate at eighteen eighty.
I make a motion to set the mill rate at eighteen eighty for fiscal year twenty-two.
I'll second that motion.
So a motion by Chris, second by Kent to, uh, uh, approve the, uh, mill rate increase of sixty-five cents uh, for next year, um, to, uh, eighteen dollars and eighty cents. Uh, all those in favor?
Opposed. I think the school was absolutely irresponsible. And had it not been for the legislature finding some money at the last minute, uh, that would have been, uh, probably a one and a quarter mill increase. And I hesitate to think what the mill rate is going to be in just a few years.
Did it come from, uh, uh, the pandemic funds that were raised? Did the money that the school board received?
No, the school board is using, the legislature, when it passed, its budget passed, raised the state aid to education up to the fifty-five percent that it's supposed to have been for decades, I think.
Two thousand and two.
That information, that, uh, additional revenue they use to bring the tax rate down on the school side.
It was approximately sixty-three million dollars extra, I think, if I remember right.
I, I think it's important for us to note that, um, that the rate of increase, I mean, we've been talking mills and cents here. Uh, the rate of increase is about three percent, three point four percent if I'm calculating that correctly, which, um, uh, in, in, in my perspective is, uh, an inflationary increase, given our economic circumstances.
Well, the town is fortunate that the town has actually kept its own, um, finances under control. And that's probably the biggest redeeming factor of keeping the, the rate increase down. However, there are things the town needs which are gonna be coming up. And we won't be able to do that much longer.
It did help that, uh, revenue sharing amount was increased also this year. And next year, revenue sharing will, is supposed to be going up to the full five percent.
Well, then I think if we're careful with our budgeting, we ought to be able to give the taxpayers a refund. And, and reduce their mill rate.
Okay, uh, next is.
A vote?
Oh, oh, we didn't vote. Yes, we did.
Yes.
We voted, yeah.
Oh, she hasn't voted yet. Okay, thank you. Sorry about that.
Next is to, uh, authorize town, no wait, next is to distribute, uh, TIF funds.
So in working with, uh, the assessor's agent, uh, on how much we could take this year from the CMP, uh, TIF, she did say that we could get the hundred and twenty thousand again this year. Now, next year, that may be going down some, is that, uh, the value on that is going down. My recommendation is to take the ninety thousand dollars that's been in the business park fund and move that over into the professional and admin section. That will cover our, uh, TIF attorney costs. It'll cover, uh, economic development costs, um, and then to take the hundred and twenty thousand and distribute it between twenty thousand for marketing and advertising, forty thousand for streetscapes, uh, ten thousand for townwide events, and fifty thousand dollars for an economic plan. And the reason I suggest that, a couple of things. The voters authorized you in June to be able to distribute the TIF funds according to the plan. So if something changes down the road in this year and you wanna move any of these funds around, you're not limited to, to just doing this one time. You'll be able to come back and do it again. I don't know that that would happen. But we do know that our professional costs are going to increase. We're hoping to bring on an economic development consultant. Um, our legal fees tend, every time we ask a question, our TIF attorney is a separate fee. We know that we, uh, have a voter-approved project for sidewalks downtown that's coming directly out of the TIF. I anticipate that once we bring on an economic development consultant and you revitalize your economic development committee, that lots of ideas are going to start to come out of there. A lot of those are probably going to be costing you some money. And so that's going to, uh, if you wanna promote the town, you're going to be spending some marketing and advertising funds. And hopefully, we'll create some more town-wide events for, throughout the year, to draw people, uh, into various parts of the town and maybe not just the downtown area. Um, so this is my recommendation.
Need a motion.
I'll make a motion, um, for Linda's recommendation of redistribution of the, uh, TIF funds.
Second.
So the motion by Chris, second by Kent to, uh, distribute the, uh, TIF funds as the, uh, town manager has, uh, suggested. All those in favor?
I oppose.
Uh, next is, uh, to authorize the town manager to use TIF funds for economic development services.
We have been talking for probably a year or more now about bringing on someone to help with economic development in the town. Uh, that's not something that we have anyone on staff who is trained in doing, or actually has the time to be able to do it justice. Uh, revitalizing the Economic Development Committee, that, the funding for that, we advertised for a position, we didn't get any response to that. Uh, so I started looking around for consultants and talked to a couple of different consulting companies. Uh, this is just before you this evening to authorize me to use the TIF funds, uh, to pay for a consultant to come on. Uh, I'm suggesting that, uh, we bring on Rayland LaRachele, who is actually here this evening, um, and try this for three months, see how it goes. And we will come back and reevaluate where we are at the end and see if we need more hours, if we need to do something differently, if we need to take a different direction. And Rayland is, is fine with doing that on a three-month term.
What's the cost?
Forty-four-hundred a month, I believe, for three months.
For ten hours a week? That equates to an aggregate salary of two-hundred-and-ten thousand dollars a year. I think that's outrageous.
Well, we're not bringing her on for a year. We're bringing her on all the three months.
I, I understand that, but nobody in this town gets two-hundred-and-ten thousand dollars a year.
I think we really need to have somebody that can come up with some great new ideas. I mean, we've had a million different ideas, but to have somebody that's trained to figure out how to bring business to town, whether it be your restaurant, whether it is building vacant buildings, or, um, you know, just generating business. I mean, if we're putting in sidewalks and spending the money for sidewalks, you know, we need more than just me walking on the sidewalks. And, um, you know, our town has a lot to offer, but, I mean, that's not my area of expertise to try to figure out how we bring business to town and how we maximize the town. I mean, we all have ideas, but to have somebody that is trained and educated and has done this before, and I think that's, would be my question for her, is to tell us some of the things that you've done at other, uh, other towns and what you can help us realize here.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Uh, select board members and town manager, my name is Reagan LaRachele. I'm with LaRachele Consulting, which is based in Augusta. And, um, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. I, I know that this select board member may have some questions for me, but I'm happy to answer any questions. But I can also tell you a little bit about my business and my background, if that would be helpful for you. So, uh, LaRachele Consulting is a management consulting firm that specializes in economic development services. Uh, I have worked in other municipalities, uh, on an interim basis. Uh, I worked for the city of Augusta when they were having a transitional time as an economic development staff person uh, for six to nine months. Uh, I actually worked in Augusta in that role. I've also done, uh, projects with other municipalities locally, Hollowell, Gardner, um, Waterville, Lewiston, uh, both with the municipality bringing me in and also with, um, developers or business owners who were looking to do negotiations with the city and expand their businesses. Um, so I was the, the intermediary between those businesses and the municipalities when they were looking for those services. So, uh, I, I've read your downtown business plan, uh, that was done in twenty-sixteen. Uh, there's a lot of good recommendations in there, but the hard part about doing a plan is, um, it can either be, become alive and be something that is utilized in your community, or it can sit on a shelf. And, um, you do need staff and resources to be able to make those recommendations happen. I thought there were a lot of good recommendations, specifically for the downtown, that remind your comprehensive plan. And I would be happy to work with you and the town manager to help get some of those projects going. Um, and, uh, in the event that you do find a position, someone to fill that position that you're looking for, as an economic development person, part-time, I think that would be great. But in the interim, it is important to move these things along and keep the ball rolling. Uh, and that's what I am suggesting that I would be able to do. Uh, I guess I'll also say that, uh, in my own community, I am an at-large city councillor, and so I sit in your position in Augusta, and I understand um, the need to be accountable to constituents and also to invest responsibly in your community. And I think that, um, uh, Monmouth, um, economic development, economic development-wise, is stagnant, um, in terms of, um, just not having resources to devote to moving forward, and that's what I'm proposing would be done here.
Well, we also have no rentable space, very few vacant buildings. Not much, uh, unfortunately, uh, uh, in the way of the local workforce force that's competent. That's one of the big problems with central Maine, is there is not enough, uh, skilled workers that, uh, wanna work or can work. Electric rates are high and going up. It's, and there, there's a number of issues. Hopefully, uh, if they decide you're gonna be it, uh, you can do something about all that.
I don't know if I can do everything, but I can certainly focus on Monmouth and start, even, even some of the lower hanging proof that's just been recommended that the town do that I think would make some differences that people would notice.
Like what's the, what's the low hanging proof?
Well, you know, you've, so, in, in other, you've had economic development staff before, ever? Okay.
Well, you've had a committee and a chair.
Okay. So, a lot of, and there, there are a lot of municipalities that don't have designated economic development people, especially at this size. But typically, um, you know, an economic development office can take the role of working with your businesses um, and helping them to understand what resources the town has, if they were interested in expanding or even relocating out of a home-based business into a downtown space, for example. Just helping them know that when they have issues, um, they can come to the town as a resource. Um, you have some tools with your, with your TIF district, and you have money to allocate to different projects. I believe you have a revolving loan fund set up already. Um, that's a great tool for existing businesses, uh, as well as businesses that might be thinking about, like I said, moving out on their own. Um, something that's important to understand with economic development is that, um, I mean, there's a couple of different ways economic development is done. There's, you know, there's the big company that comes in and offers hundreds of jobs and saves the town, but that's not really, I don't think, realistic or what you want, um, to be that dependent. A lot of times, the way economic development works actually is that it's people from the community who realize opportunities, whether it's a tipping point loan fund, or evolving loan fund, or or some sort of incentive program that helps them that little step so that they can, you know, try a business out in, in their community, which they love and they're invested in already. So, um, it's just more of that type of little step that you would need to do. Um, also, the town manager mentioned marketing, um, which definitely makes a difference. Um, uh, there was some conversation about bicycle paths and other kind of, um, tourism-based activities that, again, aren't particularly hard to do, but someone just needs to get the ball rolling on some of those things. And as, as she mentioned, uh, we're, we're talking about a three-month commitment. I also want to make sure that I am, able to, um, do what I feel I can do. Uh, and so the, the three-month, uh, timeframe was my suggestion, just to see how we could get rolling and, um, and then we can reassess it a few months and make sure that it's beneficial for everybody.
Well, I will also point out, we also, besides a revolving loan fund, we have a fifty-fifty business facade grant match program, and we have an event, uh, uh, grant program. Uh, I think there's a couple of other things I'd have to think about, but, uh, there has been significant work done in the past.
It has both been utilized.
Yes, quite a lot. And, and yet, we have, we do have four vacant buildings that I can identify right off the top of my head from within the TIF zone. Um, so we've got some opportunities. Um, at the last, uh, uh, election, we asked the townsfolk exactly what it is that they said was their priority in a survey. Their number-one request was, can you please find a sit-down restaurant for the downtown area that would help support some of the other businesses in that area that could, you know, uh, survive on the synergy of that? So, um, so there's lots of opportunities on top of, uh, their request for more recreational activities, more townwide activities, uh, and certainly, uh, things that would be appropriate for all ages, uh, uh, events that would be, uh, or, or activities that would be appropriate, um, not just for kids and families, but for, uh, folks who are retired and looking to, uh, get out.
So my goal would be, once, uh, we bring Reagan on, is to, uh, schedule a work session uh, relatively soon so that you can start to talk about a reformulated economic development committee. Because I think that Reagan may have some really good ideas about, you know, some of the types of people that you wanna try to get onto that type of committee, other than, you know, what comes to mind immediately, uh, for all of you. And then you can start to talk about what your vision is and, you know, what we're trying to do in the, in the town. And give Reagan some direction from there.
Uh, Linda and I were talking about some of the events that used to go on in town. Uh, that would bring, that brought people to town, and Darlene and, and my wife were, uh, involved in, uh, the, uh, chili chowder challenge in the winter, the, the quilt show in the spring, uh, of course, there's Mayfair, and now the beach party. And, uh, the, uh, uh, National Night Out brings people, and Apple Fest, and, uh, and then, uh, we've done a, a tree lighting ceremony, uh, around Thanksgiving time. And so there's, uh, and there's other possibilities that, uh, I, I think people, uh, if you had the right people, they would, uh, you know, um, and get involved in, uh, doing those sort of things.
When you have somebody dedicated to doing that, you know, they're the ones getting the word out. I think that's because sometimes, yeah, we all know that Apple Fest is the last Saturday of September, and May Fair is usually the second Saturday in May and those, but, you know, the tree lighting is kind of a random day, you know, and I usually find out about it after it's happened, when I drive by and see the trees lit. So, you know, those are the things that, once we have somebody that's doing that, the word can get out, you know, because not everybody looks at Facebook. You need to have, you know, some way of communicating with posters or whatever is the best way to communicate these things, so people know about them, to bring that sense of community, plus get people to town. I mean, we have this amazing building that luckily we have Dennis getting more use out of it, but we also need to find things for the people that come to the theater to do as well, you know, whether before or after, or make a weekend of it. So, you know, then it's really important to maximize all the things that I love about this town to make other people see it too. So, I'm, I'm excited to have somebody that knows how to do this, do it, so.
So, motion, we need a motion.
I'll make a motion to authorize the town manager to use TIF funds for Economic Development Services.
Second.
So there's a motion by Chris, second by Kent to authorize the town manager to use TIF funds for Economic Development Services. All those in favor? And.
Opposed.
And next is, uh, uh, Reagan, you, I, I meant to ask, do you typically do, uh, this on an interim basis, like just, you mentioned that you did it in Augusta for a few months?
Yes.
And, and this is typically what, and you suggested the three-month trial.
Yes, for, for this, for this particular, um, assignment, I think it would make sense. And I'll be, I'll be at the office, the, the town office for those, for those hours and available if you need me for a select board meeting, I guess.
Okay, okay, yep.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You too.
Okay, uh, next is to, uh, authorize the purchase of heat pumps for the administration building from, uh, Dire Electric.
I reached out to, uh, three companies, uh, that are approved under the Efficiency Main rebate program. And, um, I heard that from Dave's and Dire Electric and Augusta Fuel. Augusta Fuel is one of the companies that was originally fueling the schools when we, um, inherited them and has continued to, um, provide us with fuel over at the admin building. And, uh, Dire Electric came in with the, uh, best price, lowest price. Also, in the process, I found out that because our system, uh, was not properly, uh, rated with CMP for us to get the maximum commercial rebate per heat pump, uh, we needed to get that changed. So I broke the, um, existing meter on the admin building away from the main school and set up an account for that, uh, so that it would qualify for the biggest rebate. And so we will qualify for two thousand dollars per heat pump. So with the cost of the heat pumps being eleven thousand, six fifty, and then getting six thousand dollars back from Efficiency Main, that will bring that down to five thousand, six fifty, which for three heat pumps is pretty good.
What's the brand?
Mitsubishi.
Mitsubishi.
What's the warranty? Should be ten years.
Yeah, I don't know if that's right on the paperwork that I put in your packet, but, uh, twelve years.
Twelve years, are they up to the limit?
Yes. And they should be able to go in within a few weeks.
Mitsubishi's a good brand.
And they're a finance-based business.
Yes, yes, we like buying from local.
I make a motion that we authorize the purchase of heat pumps for the admin building from Dire Electric.
Now, second.
This is a motion by Kent, second by Chris to authorize the purchase of heat pumps for the administration building from, uh, Dire Electric. All those in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, next is to, uh, award the bid for the sale of the old backhoe.
Well, we put out, uh, the backhoe for bid, we received two bids, and the highest one is Benjamin Smith at a amount of thirteen thousand, five hundred, fifty-two dollars, thirty-two cents. I'm asking you to avoid the bid for the sale of the backhoe to Benjamin Smith. And this money will go back into the general fund.
Wait, uh, just a matter of curiosity, what, how, do you have any idea how Ben came up with that?
No.
You know, thirty-two cents.
No, but we're, no.
Might be thirty-two cents more than the guy before you. Benny, I'm sure, is pretty familiar with this piece of equipment.
I think it's a strategy to bidding for stuff, and, you know, thirty-two cents might put you over the top, I don't know.
Yeah.
Okay. So, uh.
I'll make a motion to accept, uh, the bid from Benjamin Smith for the sale of the backhoe.
I'll second.
Well, the motion by Chris, second by Kent to award the bid for the sale of the old backhoe to Ben Smith, uh, for that amount of money. All those in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
And next is, uh, to, uh, accept Linda Cohen's resignation as town manager.
As you know, I, uh, offered you my resignation last Monday, effective December thirty-first. Uh, this is just your formal acceptance of the resignation, which will create the vacancy. Later on in the work session, we will discuss, uh, the process for searching for a new town manager.
Need a motion? Yeah. I make a motion that we accept Linda Cohen's resignation as town manager.
And happily, I second.
And, uh, so, uh, And so unhappily, we accept Linda Cohen's resignation as town manager. Okay, oh, sorry. I was gonna say.
So much we don't.
I think I was gonna say. I was getting there. I was.
He was making comments.
Still, there's a motion by Chris. And a second by Ken to accept reluctantly Linda's Cohen, Linda Cohen's resignation as town manager, all those in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, a work session. On the East Monmouth Boat Launch, and I think Rob Crew is here.
Yes, a couple of meetings ago, Tim and Kent asked to have this item brought forward for discussion on the agenda. And in talking to Kent, I found out that Rob Crew from Pine Tree Engineering has been doing some work on the other side. And is familiar with this area, so I invited him to be here this evening for your discussion. And you also received today an email from the Cabessy Watershed with their input into their thoughts on that. Boat launch area and the dam area there, and I also printed those out for you, you have them before you this evening.
So the concerns that Wendy Dennis brought up were essentially my concerns when we first started talking about this because of the smallness of that area. You know, the the vulnerability right now of the milfoil stuff, you know, with with boat motors, so with things with motors. So, you know, the carrying and stuff I I'm really on board with. But for all the reasons they that she mentioned are my concerns about. Improving that boat launch for boat traffic or motorboat traffic and trailers. Because that's a pretty scary corner, having lived down the street from there and snails look great. You know, that that's a hard intersection for a lot of reasons. People come around that corner from Winthrop really fast. And then immediately turn left onto Sandborne Road. And if somebody is trying to back a trailer up and you know how that can be sometimes, it might definitely be an issue. Plus, I could see what they're talking about, you know, trying to get down there and spinning, trying to get out. And, you know, causing more erosion and putting kicking up rocks. So all of those things I really, I was glad that she mentioned because they were exactly my concerns with it, so.
Well, I disagree with some of that, the simple fact of the matter is it's not that steep. People actually do back motorized boats in there right now. And if that, at least the accessway was paved instead of being dirt, that would solve a lot of the erosion issues right there. Because that that road frequently washes a lot of dirt into that area. And the town frequently digs it back out and fixes that road for access to the dam. I think all these things could be overcome, and I think the benefits would far outweigh the issues that we might have in the beginning. Considering that inland fisheries and wildlife would significantly support the lake much more.
Have you looked at it, Rob?
Yes, yes, I have, actually took a couple photographs, if you aren't that familiar with it. Took these yesterday, and bring one for everybody that wants to share.
We can share.
So the photos clearly show that site is prone to erosion, it's pretty steep, it's all gravel. So as Tim mentioned, probably the first thing you want to look at is how do we make that existing ramp better? There's a couple of ways you can do that, you could put some concrete planks in like you have on your trail and launch on Beach Road. And you could also pave the access to those planks. So that would be a pretty simple fix, that erosion in that spot. There's a lot of other areas eroding just because of people foot tracking, going wherever they want, which that's pretty hard to control anymore. But the sites would be tough for any sizable trails and boats on this, it's just not much maneuverability. I think some people may use it for small aluminum boat, five horse motor type thing, currently, I'm guessing.
And couldn't we restrict the access to boats below a certain length?
There's a couple of different ways you could do that, Tim. Some sites are for hand carry only, kayaks and canoes. Or with that 14 foot aluminum boat with five horse motor, if you can get it through a couple of ballards, say you didn't want trails going down there. You can still let people carry a small boat and a small motor. There's still the hand carry. I think the site's probably pretty suitable for that. There are concerns with the closeness to the dam.
Yes.
That's that's a concern. I'd look upstream a little bit, it'd get steeper unfortunately, in the bank. Doesn't mean you couldn't rework, you couldn't rework the site perhaps. So some of the notes that I took from the emails I exchanged a few weeks ago is, you know, the concrete boat ramp planks. Possibly you could put a concrete abutment and floats attached to it. That might keep people away from the dam a little bit, a little bit of a buffer. But that might conflict with the maintenance needs of the dam, so. And again, concrete abutment is like we have on Beach Road. And that's where you have the floats, warning floats attached to it, so a person can tie their boat up temporarily while they're coming. No, maybe you could do something like that. I don't know what you have for property boundaries there downstream, some talk of what we could do downstream, it's just a footpath there now.
Yeah, so Rob, did you see Wendy Dennis's?
I did, just read it this evening.
Okay, great. So one of the thoughts that we had, which, you know, I'm I'm pretty sure there's no hope of motorized boat traffic for this idea. But certainly, finding a way to accommodate a carry in to the Cabessy side of the dam, the lower part of the dam. And creating either some steps or, you know, some formal footpath.
Right, exactly.
I think I think there is an informal footpath that you're off of the parking lot that, you know, kind of weaves through the woods. And if I'm eyeballing it correctly, if the if the fence is correct down there, then it goes across the property line.
Right.
On the neighbor's property and goes.
So you've got a potential issue with property ownership.
Right.
You know, so one of the first things you probably should do is get your, if you're gonna try to move forward with this, is get your property certified.
Right.
Find out where your boundaries are. Then you need to get an easement from the neighborhood to allow similar uses going on, would they allow that? Do you need to purchase more property, those are kind of the questions you have to.
Or could we find an alternative place to go?
Right.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay.
And just for your information, it was mentioned in the email that we, my company Pine Tree Engineering is working through the IFW. On the new boat launch on Innes Cook in Winthrop on the east shore. And we're going through the lengthy permitting process on that right now. It's a pretty major undertaking, large, large access, long access road to the new launch. So we're working towards that, hopefully for construction next summer, just just so you're aware of that activity in your neighborhood.
So do you think it it might be feasible? I mean, Wendy's, one of Wendy's concerns is is about protecting the work they've already done on the dam. So they have sandbags in the water that's holding down a impermeable barrier that prevents water from escaping underneath the dam. And it gives them better control of the water level in Innes Cook and and with Cabessy for that matter. So using, you know, using a motor up over the top of those sandbags that are holding that barrier down is a bit of, you know, disaster waiting to happen.
It could be, to Tim's point, it's probably happening today anyway.
Yeah.
You know, some people are probably using this with small craft.
True.
You know, my son has a 14 foot aluminum and a five horse motor, he goes fishing and ducking. Put it in the back and pick up, move it around, it's easy to do.
Yeah.
I'm guessing that's going on now, is it safe?
Maybe.
So.
So is it conceivable this, I know it's very, there's actually a second old. Boat launch that that starts at the flagpole, that's right up on Route 135. And there's, it's a steeper approach, it's an embankment, but what that does, if you go look at it, it goes straight down to the water. Back in the 40s and 50s, that's what they used. Back in the 40s and 50s, we didn't have the amount of traffic on Route 135. Yeah, yeah.
I didn't notice that.
Yeah, so so anyway, that's kind of the original.
Right.
Boat launch here. And it leads to the cove that's right up next to the bridge, which is actually, you know, gets it gets deep pretty quick. If there's a way that we could find a path to come from the parking lot without going near the road, but come from the parking lot. Maybe cross the slope to get a footpath down to that area. We might be addressing some of Wendy Dennis's.
That would be a safer location.
Would be away from the dam, we wouldn't be, you know, having to deal with, you know, prop versus sandbag issues. That might be an interesting idea to explore in terms of.
Another idea, moving the driveway location, it was in there now, either away from the intersection.
Yeah.
Coming the other way.
Yeah.
Try to remember how steep a grade change there is there.
Yeah.
Well, I was thinking that. The top might stay where it is and the bottom would move towards the bridge and that would make it more diagonal. Sort of like what he's talking about.
Yeah.
And then when the people are gonna try to drive down it anyway or back down anyway. So then people would have to pull into the front part of the parking lot and drive down, they'd be out of the road. So there's, I think there's possibilities.
Yeah, yeah, and the and the way to control what the way you want it to be used is to use the yellow ballers, like you have that one in front of the apartment. But the ball is, you know, three or four foot spacing in between, and that'll keep. The items that you don't want going down.
That'll keep the yachts from being.
Yeah. You know, hopefully, when the new launch is constructed in the Winthrop, that'll take, right now, people don't have a place to go to get on the lake.
Yeah.
Apparently, it's a couple of private locations only, so.
Yeah.
So that will take some pressure off of that, but from this end of town, it's, you know, it's a difference.
Just for the public who's listening right now, the campground, Augusta West Campground is allowing free public access from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM.
Okay.
So anyone who wants to launch a boat at there, this is through the generosity of their, of the owners of the campground. Anyone who wants to launch a boat on a trailer can go and use their ramp. To get that done, but they are growing weary of having to deal with the general public. They're a very busy place, busy enough. And, you know, providing that service to anyone who wants to go to Innes Cook is, you know, taking its toll.
So essentially, what you're only proposing to redo something for motor traffic for the Innes Cook side. And the Cabessy side, thinking about, you know, some way coming up with a foot trail for only whatever you could carry there. I mean, I understand the allure of jug stream because it's a nice little quiet place to paddle.
Yeah.
And you're not having to go down to the big boat launch and come all the way around to go on jug stream. So, you know, I just wanted to clarify what we were thinking because we're not even, you know, a mile down the street is a place to launch. Big boats, so.
Right.
For Cabessy.
I I'd, yeah, I'd be curious to know if we, I guess my concern, if we can, if we can solve the safety issues around the dam. And we can look at, you know, opening formal access to Cabessy on a carry in basis. And I don't know if you've got some ideas about how we might solve some of Wendy's concerns about, you know, trailers and moving trailers around.
Yeah.
In the parking area.
Focus of hers.
Yeah.
I don't think this sidelines itself to big trailers or, you know, you could debate whether we should have trailers at all, I don't know.
Yeah, yeah.
So perhaps you look at hand carry, two hand carry sites, one downstream, one upstream, perhaps.
And if it if it turns out that it's an aluminum five horsepower thing that's hand carried and God bless America.
That's still hand carried.
Yeah, yeah.
The fact of the matter is, you don't have a lot of space for trailing, rig parking there.
Yeah.
You know, just look at your site, I keep going back to Beach Road, but, you know, that's that's a trail of launch site.
Yeah.
Need a lot of space, 50 foot long parking spaces.
Yeah.
That go in the wrong direction.
Doesn't fit here.
Yeah.
So, you know, you have some options, you know, if you wanted to move forward, my recipe to get going would be to higher survey air, to a topographic surveys. We can see if the elevation changes are, property surveys, where your boundaries are. And then start looking, you know, the designer can start looking at some concepts, some ideas, and work towards wherever you want to go.
Okay.
Well, we'll never get anything unless we do those two things, get some concepts and get the survey.
So is this something that inland fisheries helps fund or where does the funding and monies come to?
There is one funding opportunity that I'm aware of at state level, and that's through Department of Agriculture, Conservation and Forestry. Through their boating facilities group, who's also a client of ours. Two, two groups in the state of Maine do boat launches, IFNW and Storing Facilities. And.
Was it again, sorry, Department of Agriculture?
D A C, Department of Agriculture, Conservation and Forestry. And then it's the Boating Facilities Division. Under Cox and Lance, it's followed out.
Yep.
So Tom Lynn Scott and Heather Siders are the two employees in that department. They have a grant program each year that's open to municipalities and nonprofits. And I will say they stress boating, trailing boat orders because they they're funded through gas pads. They do kind of prioritize that, but I just found out that they awarded a hand carry one to Top Boat here this year's round.
Well, like I said too, I mean, we don't have to go crazy and have 40 foot trailers. I mean, you know, if somebody with a 15 foot boat or a 16 foot boat, a trailer, I can't see as being a big problem if the site's properly designed.
Yeah, if we can find parking and maneuverability, that's the issue. So that program, each year they take applications, I think they accept them in June. They do site visits, they schedule in April, part of the site visits, applications in June, June and July. That's an annual possibility.
I worked with Heather when we were doing the vault toilet over at Woodyer Woods, she was involved with the funding of that round.
And Tom Lynn Scott is the guy who got us the sign that's down there.
Okay.
Couple of years back.
Right, because they they'll, they have grant program for money, they also have grants for replacement floats or replacement flying planks. So they have different ways they can help facilities, either brand new or in need of future maintenance.
So are you asking me to reach out to Heather and see what the grant process is and and then we can go from there? You'll know what the deadlines are and then look on what you'd like to do.
Pretty well spelt on the website. So that's one avenue for, you know, next year. Other than that, I'm not aware of any other grant programs.
Well, one of the things I think we've got going for us at this particular site is that it's historically been used this way. And that there aren't a whole lot of neighbors that would be disrupted by a little bit of construction there. If we were to enhance the use.
The fact that this is an existing site is a big bonus.
Yeah.
Because this new site that we're working on at Winthrop, because obviously with the watershed, Innes Cook is severely women light, it's very restrictive.
Yeah.
Which is costing them, it's going to cost a lot to develop that. A lot of stormwater systems, water treatment systems, comes with the territory.
Yeah. It looks though, from Wendy Dennis's email, that they have some funding that would help offset some of the, any phosphorus control, any erosion control expenses.
Right, she says she has a grand for Cabessy Lake, which she thought might be a good move to sleep.
Yeah.
Seems it's in the headwaters.
Yeah.
Now, because beyond what we're talking about, this actual launch area, there are a lot of embankments that could use some stabilization. Look at some of those pictures, there's a lot of gravel banks.
Yeah.
Every time we get these storms, it's gonna be just washing down. One of those pictures shows where public works, I presume, is paved the top of that, trying to keep it from washing down.
Yeah.
Right, where they transition from the parking lot to the ramp.
Yeah.
So obviously, that's a gully washer right there.
Yeah, 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 if they didn't have that, then the whole parking area would drain down that.
Close them.
Yeah.
So what do they, what do you tend to use for erosion control on those banks?
Well, you could use. Riprap, which is not that attractive sometimes, the erosion control mulch you'll see on the sides of highway projects on steep slopes. river rap, which is not that attractive sometimes. The erosion control mulch you'll see on the sides of highway projects on steep slopes.
Native plants. Native plants.
Yeah, yeah.
I was involved in a number of projects where we've had to replant certain native plants on the sides of streams.
Right, we've, we've worked with some homeowners from shoreline projects where they have an erosion, so we redo the slope, put that erosion control, uh, bar. It's a heavy thick, not like a landscaping mulch. It's a thicker. Or shredded, shredded, processed and then put some native plants in it. That's a pretty common way to try to get that bank stabilized, so.
But people like to look at the flowers.
Blueberry plant's one, so that's.
There you go.
So that would, you know, that would be helpful to do that and then right now, it's kind of hard to, like I said earlier, it's hard to control where people walk. They can go where they want to go. You can try to design some things to promote access where you want them to go, around the up and down of your school. Once you get that path and score erosion. It's, it's a hard one, you know, just like fishing and swimming at boat launches are not allowed, but you can do it.
Yeah.
And there was some talk about fishing too, where people fish off the platform or off the dams.
Yes.
Yeah.
And I don't know how you'll stop that either, but you couldn't. If you wanted to, you could provide a couple docks perhaps upstream. You could stand on dock and cast rather than standing on the dam.
Make it easier to go somewhere else.
But you'll have two people there and two people on the dam.
Yeah. Well, that's the sort of stuff that's been going on for generations too.
Yeah.
People, I mean.
Unless you fence off that dam to keep people from going to it.
Yeah, I don't even know if that would work.
No, it's just not that deep of water.
It'd be worse than changing something at the transfer scale.
Well, that's a little bit of a safety issue. It's not a forty-foot drop.
Yeah.
It's not a very high dam. I would go over it.
Yeah.
So this is, you know, I'm just here for the discussion. Add it around if you want to proceed. We, we, I'll assist you.
Okay.
Definitely, I think.
Well, I for one want to see it proceed, so we'll see what, uh, comes back from, from the agricultural department and then maybe we can look at how we're gonna do a survey and, and do some concepts.
Thank you for having me, there.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rob. Next thing on the work session is the town manager search process.
One of the reasons I gave you my notice so soon is because it takes, and you, some of you know, have been in the process of searching for manager in the past. It takes months to bring on a new manager because you've got, you want to advertise for a good amount of time, at least a month. And then there's the process of, you know, going through the resumes, bringing them on board for interviews, second interviews, meeting with staff. And that's going to take you several months. Uh, there's a couple of ways you can do it and I provided you with two different companies, Main Municipal Association and Eaton Peabody that do these searches. Uh, last time when I was hired, Main Municipal Association did the search. I'm told that's the first time that the select board had actually used a search company. Uh, in the past, it had been done internally. Uh, the other way that you can do it is internally, um, I can certainly handle the process of, you know, putting out an advertisement for town manager, getting the resumes in, uh, having one of you be part of the process of maybe calling them. I mean, we can hope that we get a lot, uh, so that you do need to call them down to a certain amount. The advantage, there's two advantages of doing it in-house. One, it's going to save you money that we don't really have budgeted for, uh, paying the company to do it. Two, I think the, the process can move a little faster. Because at this point, uh, if you decide to go with a company, you're going to want to bring the company in. You're gonna want to meet with them. That's gonna slow your process down a little bit, so. If you do decide to do it in-house, we can get this advertised on Monday. We'll pop it up on the MMA quickly. And then, uh, we can get it, if you want to do it on the International City Managers site, if you want to go international with it, we can do that as well. And go to some of the other sites like Indeed and, um, Work Living Work in Maine, some of those other sites. Still gonna cost us a little bit of money for advertising, but it won't cost you six thousand dollars to hire a firm. It's up to you what you want to do. I'll, I'll work with that, whatever process you want.
Well, I thought Main Municipal did a wonderful stellar job last time, especially in advising us and keeping the process confidential and protecting the applicants. However, I understand they're involved in five or six town manager searches right now and would have difficulty accommodating us. The only thing I will advise everyone to do is, um, everything has to be confidential. The resumes have to be reviewed, you know, in executive session. And I personally wish to see every single applicant resume. And I think it's important that everybody else involved in the process, AKA the five select board members, see every resume.
We can do that. Um, be advised, and Tim was right, uh, Dave Barrett has said that he's involved in several searches right now and he's got some more coming on. Which leads into the next, uh, area of the there's a lot of vacancies in town managers and city managers in the state right now. And it's getting to be a position that's tough to fill, along with all other municipal positions that we're having problem filling. Uh, being in the public sector is a tough job, but, you know, it's not just limited to municipal government right now that's having trouble finding employees. Every sector of our economy is having a hard time staffing, so. It's not something that's unique to us, but Monmouth is a beautiful community. It's got a lot to offer the new town manager and whatever I can do to smooth away for the next person coming in, I will do. But I think that we could handle the process. We will keep the resumes confidential. If the select board decides that you want to see all of them, then we'll make that, we'll make it happen. It'll happen in select, in, uh, executive session as Tim said.
I think casting a wide net is important because there's a lot of people, as we know, during this time that have wanted to relocate out of city situations or, you know, to, to smaller towns. Because we've seen, you know, almost every house in Monmouth get snatched up as soon as it goes on the market because people want to, to come here. So I think casting a wide net is important to do in international as well as the Indeed and that type of thing, not just Main Municipal. I think it's important to, to put it out there because it might not be, you know, somebody an hour away. It might be somebody from across the country that fits the bill and, and meshes with us. But I think having, having Linda's input, considering she's been involved in municipal government for so very long. There's a lot of people that she knows and she might be able to help guide us in what will fit with, with our personality as a town and, and people that will work well with what our goals and dreams and hopes are, because she, she knows a lot of people. So I think that's important to have, have some input from, from Linda on that.
Well, last manager search we did, we had fifteen applicants. More than half of them were for, from out of state. Most of them were very well qualified. It will be, uh, probably faster to do it in-house, but I would urge everyone to, to do it in executive session and look at every single resume.
You have to do it in executive session. This process has got to be kept confidential right up to the very last moment that you can possibly keep it confidential. Because you may decide in the end that you want to, um, I mean, one of the things that Eaton Peabody does, which sometimes doesn't go over really well with applicants, but it's totally up to you how you want to do your search. When you narrow it down to a couple of finalists, they'll have, uh, some kind of a meet and greet from the public and have the public input. That's totally up to you. The problem that happens with that is then the confidentiality is out the window. And whoever doesn't get selected then has to deal with, if there are another manager in another town, they have to deal with the fact that now their select board or their, uh, city council or town council knows that they're lucky. So you have to, we kind of have to decide how we want to do that. Also, want to know again, because there's no budget for this, if you want to pay for someone to fly in, stay here for interviews, or if you want to make it, um, upfront known that you won't be paying expenses for people to come for interviews.
We did a Zoom interview for several people last time. And, uh, then we, uh, we only paid for one particular individual that we thought was, uh, worthy of the, uh, effort.
Yeah, and if you get it down to one person like that, it's not gonna cost that much.
I think that's reasonable, you know, too.
And I think I understand too, Eaton Peabody's involved in three searches right now.
Well, I make a motion that we, uh, proceed with an in-house, uh, recruitment plan.
I'll second that.
This motion by Ken, seconded by Chris to, uh, do the town manager search process in-house. All those in favor? Thank you. And next is warrant number four.
Before we move on to that though, I did send out the job description to all of you last week. Anything, anyone wants to change, let me know. Like ASAP, we'll get this up and running on Monday.
Okay.
We'll get mad. Uh, checks over a thousand dollars, Anderson Stock and Bank. Uh, this is a loan payment on the Wilson Plan Calder project, forty thousand, one hundred thirty-eight dollars, forty cents. Blue Rock Earthworks for solid waste strips, two thousand, two hundred twenty-five dollars. Card number services, our credit card. Uh, we put the cost of the carpet for the admin building on there. My, uh, manager seminar at Sugarloaf, our Adobe license and our Zoom costs, four thousand, one hundred fifty-three dollars, forty-six cents. Central main power for electricity, three thousand, seventeen dollars, fifty-eight cents. Dennis K. Burke for gasoline, one thousand, three hundred nineteen dollars, thirty-three cents. Friends of the Cobassie Watershed, this is the, uh, boat inspection program, six thousand, seven hundred fifty dollars. High Output, uh, this is Comston Hall, phase two of the lighting project in the theater, forty-four thousand, five hundred thirty-one dollars, fifty cents. Kennebec Valley Council of Governments for planning services, one thousand, two hundred sixty-eight dollars, sixty cents. Lucas Striping LLC for crosswalk painting, two thousand dollars. Main equalization, your monthly assessing fee, two thousand, two hundred eighty-seven dollars, fifty cents. Main Municipal Employees Health Trust for employee insurance, twenty thousand, five hundred eighty-nine dollars, thirty-nine cents. Main Waste to Energy for solid waste tipping fees, two thousand, four hundred forty-nine dollars, thirty-four cents. Treasurer State of Maine for motor vehicle plates fees, nine thousand, eighty dollars, twenty-seven cents and eight thousand, three hundred two dollars, thirty-eight cents. US Bank Corporate Trust of Boston, this is the first full payment on the Packer Gilman project. To Main Municipal Bond Bank, one one hundred eleven thousand, one hundred eighty-seven dollars, sixty-five cents. And Waterman Farm Machinery Company Incorporated, uh, this is a tractor rental for doing the roadside mowing, thirty-six hundred dollars.
I move we accept warrant number four.
Second. So a motion by Chris, seconded by Ken to approve warrant number four. All those in favor? Thank you. Motion to adjourn.
I made the motion adjourn.
I'll second.
And all those in favor?
Did that password. I draw that, I did. It's capital C, capital A.
I got a couple of them circulating.
Yeah.
Over there.
Yeah. Green peppers or jalapenos for anyone?
Hey, Dan.
Hi, Dan.
Hey, Dan.